Like all this evening's King's Local Schools Board of Education work session to order. Mr. Furness, could you please call the roll, sir?
Mr. Balfour.
Here.
Mr. Bidwell.
Here.
Ms. Town.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Phillips.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
So before we proceed with this evening's agenda, I wanted to give it to Mr. Sears for just a moment. Sears?
Yep. Thank you, President Balfour. It's with great sadness tonight that we recognize that one of our bus drivers unfortunately passed away this morning unexpectedly. Keith Beach was a driver in our district since 2012, had retired a few years ago and then had been subbing in our district throughout this year, mainly through Route at KME. And so it's an unfortunate passing, a difficult situation for him and his family, and certainly our hearts and thoughts and prayers go out to Keith and his entire family. So I just wanted to take a moment this evening as we start just to pay a quick tribute to Keith and the service that he's had for our district.
Thank you for that, Mr. Sears. Next on the agenda or first up on the agenda are discussion items for the Assistant Superintendent HR and Business. I believe this be Mr. Spinner.
Thank you, President Balfour. You may remember that earlier at the outset of the school year through the staffing shortages, we were unable to provide childcare to all of our key members who originally registered, fortunately placing a last bit of hardship on some of those families. As part of our ongoing efforts to avoid the situation again, we have begun to explore other options, solutions. One of those potential solutions that's here with us this evening, tonight I'm joined by Beth Corlolo and Erica Daniels.
Beth and Erica respectively serve as the Partnership Manager and Cincinnati Area Regional Director for Champions before and after school childcare. Champions is a highly decorated program serving multiple school districts across the nation, most notably in our area, Indian Hill, Loveland, Madeira, and Sycamore, where they enjoy the same five-star Step Up to Quality rating that our current childcare program has also received in the past. This evening Beth and Erica will present to you an in-depth look into their programming along with solutions on how and why they can assist our school district and more importantly, our families with meeting their childcare needs. Following their presentation, we will be happy to field any and all questions you may have as we continue to explore the services they provide as a possible solution. Beth and Erica, thank you for being here with us tonight. Look forward to your presentation.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm Beth Corlolo. Erica will introduce herself. We're going to take you through a few slides. So you guys, if you want to turn around a little bit, thank you. We do have a couple of videos to show you during our presentation. And then upon closure, we will take questions regarding, you know, what we've shared with you and any questions you may have regarding the Champions program. Carrie, if you want to go to the next slide, please. So many people do not realize that Champions is under the brand of kinder care education. And many of you are familiar with kinder care early learning centers, which we frequently see in the community, especially around Ohio. We have many early learning centers. In addition to the early learning center component, we also have kinder care at work, where we partner with large corporations and firms and actually provide daycare for those employees at the job place. And Champions is the school district division of kinder care education. So we partner with school districts where you provide the space and then we basically do everything else. We call ourselves a turnkey solution. The reason I like to bring this up is especially when we went through the pandemic this past year. You know, a lot of providers struggled and that struggle was very real. And the nice thing being under this umbrella of kinder care education is being a national organization and having the access to resources that we have, we were able to stay open nationally. We were able to help families. We were able to stay in our communities and we were able to help, you know, those essential workers get through this terrible time. So, you know, having that supportive kinder care there gives us a lot of flexibility and a lot of resources that many smaller local brands don't have that ability to have. We like to say you're in good company. We received our national accreditation, what is this, Erica, 20 years ago? From Loveland. We were working in Loveland and so these are some of the schools in your area and I just did a graphic. So the Champions banners are the districts we work with, the orange pins are the actual sites. But as you can see, you would be joining several people in your community and in your city, including the Cincinnati Reds. We have a new division called Game Day. So we actually take care of the players' children. And Erica launched the Cincinnati Reds for us and we were just at the World Series with the Braves, taking care of some of those kiddos. So that was a good, good time. Okay. And we do hold ourselves to a higher standard. So when we look at Step Up to Quality, which, you know, I've heard rumors that State of Ohio is kind of looking to let that Step Up to Quality go. We hope they don't. But in addition to that, we are accredited by Cognia, which used to be Advanced Ed. Many of you have heard of Advanced Ed. So what we do is we've been accredited now for 10 years and we open up all of our doors to a third-party independent evaluation of not only our space, but our curriculum, our staff, our learning environments. We have a proprietary curriculum. So we hold a national accreditation for our organization. And I believe we're one of the only care providers that has this accreditation. So we take very seriously our safety standards, our health and safety standards, safety of children, quality of our staff, very seriously. Now we're going to take a look at a video and this is kind of a little bit of a day in the life of a Champions program.
Next video one, welcome to Champion. Please go to the champion now. All champions do, please go to champion now.
What is your favorite sheet without taking it?
There's lots of activities and lots of people to play with.
That would have lasted me. She plays volleyball fast. Go.
I'd like to do four, because she's bad.
I need to do this back. We are first standing for me.
We can use this little box to hold all the ball.
Really fun. It's really, 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 really.
We value our partnership with Champions because it really helps them, you know, take an extra step after that bell rings. Our parents and guardians value in the program. I see engagement, innovation, fun, the whole child, and if you leave for something that's just more than aftercare, that will be a champion.
Oh, this was done obviously pre-pandemic. You know, now we're going to see some masks and we're social distancing. But this just kind of gives you a flavor of what a Champions after-school program would look like.
Yeah.
So a couple of things in the next few slides that we'll focus on, and I already referenced this with the accreditation is the Champions difference. So again, with the COVID new regulations, we really strive for really high-quality health and safety standards. And Erica can discuss some of the activities we've been doing in all of our sites. We have a proprietary curriculum. So it's a seasonal curriculum where our teachers and site directors know what they're doing every single week. And it follows the seasonal curriculum, but at the same time, if something's going on in the district or in an elementary building and the principals or teachers in that building would like us to coincide with the activities they're doing in the classroom, we're happy to do that. It's, we can modify anything. But we do communicate with the parents on a weekly basis to let them know what type of activities we'll be having in the Champions program, everything as well as like the snacks the kids will be having for breakfast and for after-school. We really do consider this a true partnership. So we want to really blend in and become part of the King's Local family. Champions, you know, that's really how it works the best. We've been doing this quite a long time. And if we're not listening and we're not kind of following the protocols and the regulations and the things the way King's Local does it, we won't get that good bonding partnership that we're looking for. We strive to keep the children very, very engaged. They have so much fun that they don't really want to leave at the end of the day. So while we know we're doing engaging activities, curriculum and STEM activities, robotics, you know, they're building wobbly bridges, they're making elephant toothpaste, they're, you know, doing puppy paints and having just a ball. But we know that they're communicating, they're working together collectively, they're developing their social emotional skills. They're looking at equity and inclusiveness. So a lot of good, good things are coming out of that Champions program. But in the meanwhile, they're just having a great time.
Need for disguised learning.
Yeah, the disguised learning. Very true. So this past year, we really wanted to focus on rebuilding our learning communities. Understanding that kids have been at home for some time, we have the ability to refocus our curriculum and really strive to build into our content and train our teachers in trauma-enforced care, anti-bias education, really focused on creating positive classroom cultures, infusing more of that social emotional support and teaching our kids resilience. We believe that if we can, you know, help them understand how to bounce back in some ways, we can get them through tough times like this and, you know, have them move forward in a positive fashion. And finally, we're going to really say, you know, every child deserves a place to belong. And this is really about our inclusion and equitable program. When you look at a Champions program, it wouldn't matter if you're visiting a program in Cincinnati, Ohio, or if you're going out to Cupertino, California. Every Champions program is going to look and feel the same. Every Champions program receives the same materials, equipment. We all have the same training. So regardless of where we are in the United States, every child is going to have the ability to participate in these activities. We are not a club program. And the reason I say that is many care providers will come in and they'll say, well, we'll take care of the kids and make sure they have fun, but then if you want to do robotics, you're going to pay $10 more a week, or if you're going to do this, you're, we don't do that. Everybody has access to everything. We want every child to be able to participate in whatever activities they wish to participate in. So we let them choose what they would like to do and we really, really do believe in this. We also have an inclusion services team with Champions. And what that means is if we were happy to accept any and all student, and so anyone with, you know, any kind of behavioral challenge or disability, we absolutely want to accept students. We want to work with our staff and through our inclusion services team to make sure that any modifications we need to do to make sure that that student has the ability to engage and have a wonderful time in our program, we're going to make those modifications. You know, and so really at the end of the day, it's just about the relationship building and making kids, you know, safe space for kids to have fun and really be able to explore and just grow as an overall student. Now we're going to kind of get into some logistics and I'll just preface, we'll talk about some logistics and then I'll show you one more little video and then we can do some questions. So what we're proposing, and Tim and I have talked about this, if we came in, we want to mirror exactly what you've had before. We don't want the community to feel that there's any kind of change in the care program. So we'll do the exact same hours. We'll offer before and after-school programming for all of your students, K through eight. We will also offer preschool care and we call this a morning and afternoon care. So children participating in a preschool program, whether it be in the morning or in the afternoon, they'll have care options if parents need that. We are able to offer a full day of care. I know right now, Tim and I talked, there's a Friday option. We can absolutely do that if that's what the community and families need. We can do full-day care as well. This is a no-cost program to the district. It is a parent-pay model, exactly what you do now. We would be a turnkey solution. So Champions would come in, we would go into partnership. We would provide all the licensing and the insurance. We would take on any staff that would like to join us. We bring in all the curriculum and materials, including all the snacks. We do the enrollment. So we work with the families to get them enrolled and registered. We handle all communications and marketing. We can do family nights, open houses, virtual events, anything that we need to do. All the accounting and billing. One thing parents love is we do not have contracts with Champions. We are not one of those programs. And I think we've all seen this before. I know I went through this with my daughter. You would have to pay to save a spot. And even if your child attended or did not attend, you were still going to have to pay to retain that spot. We do not do that with Champions. Everyone can attend. We do ask them to register. So we have, you know, emergency contact information and all that good stuff, but it's flexible. So every Wednesday, the week before a child attends, we ask that the parent go on the website and let us know what their schedule will be for that week. And we have part-time, we have full-time options. We also offer, if you choose to do this, we can have winter camps or winter break. We can do spring break camps, summer camps. We can offer care on early release days. If you're doing district professional development and you would like us to have extended hours for those days, we can provide that as well. So very, very flexible. Our last video will show you and then we'll take some questions. Love to end with that. So yeah, now we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What would the cost be for our families compared to what they're paying right now?
Next one. Here we go. So we tried to keep it pretty much in line. I think if I can remember correctly, it was like $33 part-time and we didn't go up much. I don't even think it was increased by $5 for before-school and it was less than 10 for after-school. Combined rate, I think your combined rate was $99 a week.
And so we're at one of three. So we were able to do that very equitable and not raise it much.
Now again, in the preschool.
Area here, we'd say pretty much the same.
And if those times change or your schedule changes for those little ones, we can adapt to that. We're going to stay very close to what the families were paying before. It's important to do that and we recognize it as we don't want, you know, we don't want this to be stressful on any of families. Now, being a licensed provider as well, we are eligible for subsidy through the State of Ohio. And for every 10 children that attend Champions, we will scholarship the students and we will work with the principals of the building to identify a family in need that would like that scholarship. I can leave you these slides too. All the prices in the proposal I sent.
So that, I'm sorry, someone up there. So for that Cognia piece that was mentioned in the earlier slides, I think it, did I hear that right? You said that they do actually assess the space that we use? So would they need to assess our facilities? And how does that work?
So we hold corporation accreditation with Cognia. So what they do is they assess at our National Support Center and they assess at one Champions location across the country, just one across the entire country. And it happens to be right here, almost in the backyard at our Loveland Primary School in the Loveland City School District. So that assessment took place there in Loveland. Actually during the pandemic this past April, we were due for re-accreditation every five years. And so that upholds our accreditation. And then, you know, any kinds of things towards that continuous improvement model and some of our goal-setting and things, those are things that we do across the Champions brand at all of our sites, but only that one location goes through the actual assessment process.
Okay.
Now during licensing, you know, you are licensed currently, you have licensable space. So we will have to get our own license and. And our team will come in and do. Yes. So every location, every school will have their own license through the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services.
So you would be using our current spaces that we're using now, correct?
And any additional spaces you would like to identify or if you want the spaces moved?
So Tim, how does this affect current staff? Would they have an opportunity to interview with Champions? Or I know you guys are soup to nuts. So would they? I know, I mean, I know we have families that mentioned to me, you know, they, their kids have formed relationships with people who work in King's Kids. I'm just curious how that might work.
It's an excellent question because we consider our kids as part of our kids' family.
Absolutely.
It's actually one of the first conversations I had with Beth when exploring this as a possible solution. So I actually would like to first use your.
100%. We want everyone that wants to be with us. And we have to be realistic and understand that, you know, it's difficult to switch. And we've taken over quite a few and Madeira being one in your backyard. So, you know, we are a private organization. We're not a school district. So it is a little bit different to come to work for Champions. Positive things will be, we can give everyone a 20% to 30% raise, if not more. It can provide benefits, health benefits, all kinds of good stuff. And Erica can go through all those benefits. If you work 25 or more hours with us a week. We have 401K retirement programs. They will pay into Social Security, things of that nature. So we have that structure available. But as many people as would like to join us. We have several positions. We have, we'll have a site director at every building that stays out of ratio. And that person really is the guiding force for that building and keeps in contact with the principals and the teachers and makes sure that our staff teachers are moving forward with activities. You'll have teachers at every site, assistant teachers, junior counselors. So there are, there's a lot of opportunity here to take on many, many folks. So yes, I have sent over some job descriptions. We can, we can talk with the staff. Like I said, I think everyone who wants to join will have a space. It will just be up to them if they would like to join.
How do you handle discipline issues?
And issues? We play in the gray. Did you just? As Beth mentioned, we do have an inclusion services team that really supports the work that we do with our interactions with children. And everything from manipulatives that we use in each of our programs, where children can have a little mini reflection kind of break time area, they need to cool down a little bit. They put on these headphones because it just gets a little over-stimulating, whatever it may be in that realm. Certainly our policy is progressive guidance all day, every day, right? So it's really about helping children understand and the teachers understand what are causing some of these challenging behaviors.
What's going through?
What's going on in that child's life, right? Let's get to the heart of it and see where we can lean in and support that child. 9.9 times out of 10, right, comes down to that the social emotional learning piece, socializing with other students. It can be difficult when they've been in school all day. And so we also need to adapt to what their needs are at that time with our environment, our activities, our routine, our approach. And so we really do provide a lot of media training, but then ongoing professional development for all of our team members around how do we support the needs of children in the best ways? The diverse needs, the individual needs. And it just comes down to the heart of our service values. So we do a lot of work around that. We definitely have a lot of support just brand-wide and company-wide around meeting the needs of each individual child. But forming those relationships with the families, having those interactions with the parents to talk through their child. They know their child best. But then again, like Beth said, it's a partnership with the school community. You know, can have that open communication with the child's school day teacher, perhaps a guidance counselor, perhaps that, you know. And so all of those kind of relationships definitely make a difference.
When you mentioned the seasonal curriculum, curriculum is something that has become more and more a concern of parents. If parents wanted to review the curriculum, would they be able to? And if there was something they didn't want their child to participate in, would they be able to opt out of particular issues?
That's a great question. It's very much an open-ended curriculum. So very different than the school day, right? We're not teaching to standards per se and that kind of cognitive. It is more of an informal kind of setting where the children can make choices. Right? So we have these planned activities and this particular theme, I'll tell you, one of our current themes was gross and gooey physiology. They're working with intestines, they're, I mean, bones and, you know, great time of year for that. But certainly any activities that the children don't want to participate in, we have our literacy corner open for them. We have the games. We have the puzzles. We have the manipulatives. We have, you know, and so it's so open-ended. Of course, there's a homework area. And so this kind of model works very well for the children because again, they come to us, they have all different needs, depending on how that they feel that day, how the day was, what they're interested in, you know, where their passions lie and hobbies, gross motor time. We do find that most children like that time in the gym or outside or practicing yoga in the program. But there's so many different options available. And certainly if there's also a concern from a parent relative to certain long-term projects or things we do, we factor that in as well. And that, again, that's where that relationship and that open communication. But I find, you know, that the children have so many options that usually that doesn't really.
How is the, but Tim, I was looking at the, how we currently do things when we bus kids like back from Columbia. How we move kids to the King's Kids sites, all that would be, remain the same based on what we do outside of Champions.
Yeah, that's correct.
I only addressed that because it was the busing, not. Okay. And if you could, could you just talk a little bit, we didn't really discuss it too much, the, the summer camp, how does that, how, what does that look like?
The summer and the summer camps is, is just a phenomenal transition for Champions, if at all possible. It's the best situation and scenario for Champions to be in a partnership with the school district for, for various reasons, right? But normally, the way it works is all of the schools, so to speak, the programs come together at one location, whether it's at Kings Mills or Columbia, and would operate the summer camp program at that location for the entire school district.
You in a spotlight.
Yes, yes. So, you know, and, and we would really determine the dates, the start and end dates with what, what would work best for the school district. Sometimes it's, hey, can you close a week or two before the school year starts? We gotta wax the floor, we gotta have meat, you know, and so on. So as far as, and the hours of operation, all of that is flexible of just what's going to work best for the school district, the families and so on. But it would be similar with, you know, hopefully back to field trips or bringing in, you know, guest speakers and all of those kinds of camp-esque experiences, you know, that, that children enjoy, we try to get outside and things like that. So it's, it's a nice, well-rounded, enrichment-filled experience for the children.
Just to add to that, our, this past summer, along with re-engaging our learning community, we did a whole theory around like Wayfinder Waters, Discovery Cove. You know, some really great thematic fun things for the kids that really got them re-engaged, like the educational process, but having fun. This summer, they're already discussing having more of a, a time traveler journey for the students. So while they're in the actual camp program, it'll, it'll follow that time traveler theme and exploration. So that will be really nice. So every summer, we kind of have a new thematic component. So it's not just kind of, you know, doing the same thing every year. And then in addition to that with the field trips, the guest speakers and, you know.
How's your staffing levels then with, based on just the one, do you already service, obviously? But are they transferable between, like a Madeira teacher comes to Loveland or to King's or?
Talking about that earlier, because I said this, this could come up as a question. And we like to keep our staff with the district that they're in. It would be a very rare occurrence where we would have to ask a site director to step in at another school. And Erica can speak more to that. She, she as an area manager may be one of those folks that would go fill in if we needed it somewhere. But we like to keep the staff with the district that they're hired.
Yeah, it makes sense. I just, you know, the reality of it is what we experienced at school on a day-to-day basis, that we have teachers out. Things that, you know, so I don't, you know, obviously these are, they're paying, what's their expectations to have?
So we have to stay in ratio and these ladies were supposed to join me at the Ohio School Board Association Conference this Monday, yesterday and today, and they had to stay in Cincinnati to stay in ratio for some of our, for some of our schools. So we absolutely have to stay in ratio at all times and.
When you say in ratios, that's students to teachers?
Right, right. I believe we're one to fifteen.
But what happens if it doesn't? Well, I mean, the reality is, I mean, especially, I mean, it could not happen.
So we, in our, and again, you can, we have several area managers in Cincinnati. So we have, you know, Becky, Erica, Sherry, they would fill in at those locations. And then we have assistants to our area managers in Cincinnati who would fill in. But we do have resources outside of each district and they can be deployed to go where they need to go. Now, in an emergency situation, could we, if we're overstaffed at one district, ask them to come step in at another district a hundred percent? You know, they're all trained in the Champions.
And it's fifteen, fifteen to one? And is there a limit, like? How many we can handle?
So we always say if we can provide space, we can fit staff.
Like waitlist.
What's been our maximum? I mean, this was a tough year before, we obviously didn't have that, but.
We've had waiting lists in the past.
Okay.
I know at one of the schools in the district, we used to have between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and twenty students. Varying on different days of the week, that was like the max we had.
And that's, that's where Champion's system of asking parents to dial in on Wednesday, I believe, with their plans for the following week.
Yeah.
Certainly helps in making sure that they stay in ratio and how many, as many students as possible.
And we also have a max in preschool because we only have so much space downstairs. So we almost always have a waiting list for our childcare for preschool because of the space, almost always. Yeah.
The room, yeah. We'll give you a capacity.
Yep.
And is the list based on first come, first served then, if one sign-up time comes? And how would we? Would this would, could possibly start then next fall?
Right, and you'd like, like you're, if you'd like to start in the summer, that gives us a good transition, a good way to meet a lot of the families and begin making those community connections, family connections.
And then, yes, we, we open up registration, you know.
As soon as possible, whenever we'd like to open up registration. And then families can begin registering for the summer program and for the long program.
I certainly would like, and I don't know how well I can be heard, hopefully, if I'm fair and well, I certainly would like to continue to ask questions. If we continue to research and explore Champions as a possibility, part of that is looking to be meetings with current staff to answer any questions that they may have, what this might look like for that, what opportunities are available. In addition to a parent that, or two, where our families can come in and ask some questions and make sure to that point. Is there a couple of the program? And this is a change, for sure. This gives us about a month of time to do look or research, have those conversations. And potentially, if it all goes well, despite the, the viable fit from the district, come to the board with the recognition in December, which will allow them to begin in January, just as our program would have in the past, to begin planning for the, the upcoming summer program.
How many other programs similar to yours are out there?
Well, you know, again.
Assuming that you're the best, I'm just saying, you know, who else, who else is out there muddying the waters? There's few.
Um, yeah.
None are, like I said, corporately accredited, you know, have the right to, correct.
Um, you know, I think Tim's explored a couple other options. And.
I mean, you have good school districts, obviously.
Yeah.
I mean, you're some of the best around, so.
I mean, I represent Ohio, you know, I'm in Michigan, Indiana, Illinois. I mean, I have several states and we're just.
Really hoping somebody's in districts and families in the pandemic, we have really just been able to, we really kind of set our site on opening about a hundred new sites a year.
And this year, we're over a hundred and fifty.
And we have a waitlist already, which is upcoming.
And they really, curriculum-wise, they really stayed, I mean, California to Ohio?
Well, yeah, because we're not standards-based, you know.
Illinois, I mean, there's crazy stuff going on in all these states.
Yeah.
I was just there the other week helping out on some, some programs.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's more about more fun stuff, but.
Yeah, the, the curriculum is really written and built around executive function. You know, twenty-first century skills, it's all about problem solving and collaboration and leadership, literacy, conflict resolution. Those kinds of broad skills that during the school day, perhaps children don't get as much, you know, attention to and, and so on and so forth. So it's just that, this out-of-school time is, is so beneficial and impactful to these children. For bad reason alone, but, and then the social emotional piece. There's a external body that we use, Sanford Harmony is the name of the program that we use, samfordharmony.org. And in fact, we share this with our families because it is a free.
Social emotional learning curriculum.
And anyone can tap into, and it has so many great resources for parents, for families. And so while we implement some of this in our programs, we share this with the families. And we give them the parent letters and encourage them to go on and make an account and, and practice some of these kind of at-home things with their children. So yeah, across the country, you know, the, these experiences for children, we've seen definitely are beneficial and, and enjoyable. Again, we call it disguised learning for.
Yeah.
Matt, Dana, have you two had a chance to look at the curriculum? Putting you on the spot.
No, we, we have not. I was just gonna say that some of the stuff you're talking about, I, when my three children went, because all my three kids all went through that before and after school. So I know what you're talking about, the executive functioning. I'm assuming there's also a time like they do homework first and your curriculum has nothing to do with homework, there's no things they bring back the next day, all of that. This is just spot-on at the time. Yeah, yeah, that's what I thought.
There's that sets, like kind of routine schedule that the children get into, they come in, you know, they do wash their hands, they have a snack. They go out for playtime, you know, get, work out some of that, get a good energy and then come in, they can focus on homework. Or if they don't have homework that day, they can start going to the exploratory areas and doing activities. So yes.
One of the questions I did have, and I'm sure Tim's talked to you about this, is the gym time, like do you need a gym? Or do you just, the space that you do around that kind of activity, like what's the space you're looking for with that?
Have access to an outdoor playground, obviously.
Yes, and if there are times throughout the school year when the gym is available, we know we're in basketball season right now. So perhaps right after school for, for fifteen, twenty minutes until the basketball players come in. But, but certainly it isn't required for, you know, gym usage. But if there are times throughout the school year or in the summer when it works out, if it's raining outside or it's just very cold, you know, the gym is available, we'll certainly take advantage of it.
Same for preschool with wanting a childcare place outside if you can.
Correct, yes, licensing does.
That's what I thought, yeah. The other question, Stacey, I will tell you, I talked to Tim about is the, their inclusion program, our special need kiddos in the preschool as well as before and after school care, because we've really built that program up in the past three or four years. So Tim and I have talked a lot about that and checked in with, it's very similar to what we're already doing. From everything I can tell, with both programs, the preschool and before and after school care.
Wasn't gonna ask.
So I think I'll just chime in here real quickly, but one of the things that, you know, as I'm having conversations in our community and small groups, this comes up, King's Kids and the value that the before and after care comes up at almost every session that we have and every conversation we have. So we know the importance that it has in our community. And so it's really important for us to make an informed decision on the direction that we want to go. And what tonight is, is the first, it, it, I think it's evidence of a process on how we want to use and have open communication with this group in a meeting, asking questions, giving you the first opportunity to, to ask questions. Those, you can continue over a period of time. We also want to, and Tim alluded to this a few minutes ago, we want to open this up to have some parent sessions as well. So invite our parents in, because it is a valuable entity in our district, we want our parents to be able to sit down with us and, and invite these nice folks here and they can share more information, ask questions. And we'll get, we'll get feedback from parents from what that looks like. From there, we'll analyze a lot of that information, try to, try to synthesize all of it to if we are going to move in this direction, we would look at a December board meeting option. So that gives us five weeks from now to do some additional work. So Tim's done a lot of work vetting, landing in, in this potential option. And now it's through a lot of open communication and dialogue and questioning, starting with tonight, that we can make an informed decision if this is the direction that we want to go. So this is not one of those things that we have made any commitments to. We have not made any promises to anything, but we are interested in, in an option like this as it can increase some efficiency in the district and provide a great service to our families. So this, just pointing out process-wise what we're doing and having this start here tonight as part of it. So if there's any other questions.
I do have one question. Would it be, you talked about Loveland quite a bit, would we be able to go visit Loveland? Like, do they have a child, a preschool childcare or is it just before and after school?
Indian Hill does have a preschool. And boy, they have had it for years. It's a NACI accredited preschool. Loveland has the before and after school program, the Cognia accreditation and summer camp. We're serving a student with cerebral palsy and the, and a deaf student there in our before, in our after school program there at Loveland. So that would be a great, but certainly you're welcome to visit any, but certainly would be a great.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you for coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will do. Thank you. Thank you again, Beth, Erica. Safe travels. Appreciate you coming down for the presentation. Great night. Next up, on my part of the agenda, personnel items up for discussion this evening. At the very top of the list, I do want to point out and congratulate three of our staff members who are signing for purposes of retirement in this particular board agenda. Robin Bersani joined our district in nineteen ninety-one. She's been at a couple of our elementary buildings, most recently and notably JF Burns, where she teaches with her daughter. Celeste Etscore, guidance counselor, servicing the St. Martin of York community. She has been here since nineteen ninety-six. And then Billy Hauck, who began her career as a childcare aide at JF Burns in nineteen ninety-three and has recently served as an administrative assistant at Kings Mills Elementary. Also held several leadership roles in our, our OPEC classified union. So a lot of experience going out the door. We congratulate them for their, and thank them for their time here in the King's Local School District. Clearly missed and we appreciate their service to our children. Our next up, staff resignations. New staff members, of which you will see some cook cashiers, childcare aides, a new nurse at our high school. Staff miscellaneous items and supplementals and stipends as we prepare for spring and winter sports. Next item on the agenda is a memorandum of understanding. This was an oversight in our last contract, we had agreed with our teachers' union to raise the bell rate for a substitute teacher. So if a teacher steps in and bell to cover a teacher that is absent for that period. They had received twenty-five dollars as a stipend. We had increased, we had agreed to increase it to thirty. So we are memorializing that with this MOU and we'll make sure to fold it into a contract in our next negotiations this spring. So we have authorization to dispose of used equipment. I'm going to pass my microphone off to our business manager, Mr. Lucky.
You've all seen this before, it's a bus out of repair, can't pass inspection anymore, so we're going to auction it off.
And it, is it being backfilled, Matt, or no?
Not, not in that, so this would be a district-owned bus.
District, okay. Gotcha.
Are you stripping that bus down prior to auction for?
This, this is one that we can actually auction. It, it could be driven not for school. It could be driven not for school. So typically what you'll see is we will scrap, which nets us about $500. Basically, they come and get it and try something a little bit different to see if there's the ability to make some more off of the scrap.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you, Ms. Spinner. Next on the agenda is the items for the assistant superintendent educational program. This is Martin.
Good evening, everybody and Mr. Freeman also. So Matt and I have put three items on your board docs tonight. We're going to refer to this presentation and then we'll get to the other two resources. One of the very first things I want to tell you we're going to do is we're going to actually cut our presentation in half. We're going to do half tonight and half at the December work session. So we have a lot on here. If you've gone and looked at the PDF at all, we want to make sure we give it our due diligence, right? So we're gonna, we know where we're gonna stop. Go over the other two references for you and then we'll pick back up in December. Also gives you a chance to kind of look, see if you have some questions and we'll pick back up there with it if that works for everybody.
So can I ask where are you going to stop? So if anyone has any questions now, we don't start delving into stuff you're gonna do later.
Yeah, so tonight we're gonna do an overview, just to kind of remind everyone what is entailed with the entire report card. And then tonight, we're just gonna talk about achievement.
Okay.
The achievement component.
Thanks, everybody. We think we can spend a little bit more time that way then and take more questions. So the very first thing we're going to talk about is tonight, we're going to talk about the report card, right? It's the 2021 school year. We received this in October. The very last time we've talked about a report card is 2019. Remember last year, we didn't have one. A thing called COVID again, which we'll have to refer to a little bit. So they didn't have a report card last year. So just remember that as we go through some of our data, you're going to see 2020, no data many times, which kind of affected quite a bit of stuff. The data is from the spring 2021 testing cycle. The other thing to really remember is there were no grades this year, so we were held harmless because of 2020 and COVID. So there's, it's gonna look a little different for you this year than it has in the past. And the data that Matt and I keep going into looks a little bit different as we get to them. So that we'll point out a few things for you. The other thing to remember is this is the last year that this report card looks this way. We're switching to a whole new look and that's going to be one of the references we go over for you tonight. So you can take a look at that. As we've talked about, and I remember the teaching and learning department talking about this the past years. I think we are happy for some of these new changes, right? So some of the stuff we're going to show you tonight, probably we weren't real thrilled about at times either. So we like some of the new changes that's coming. So take that with a grain of salt as you see some of the data and that might be more in December. So this, remember this is also one tool, right? This is one tool we look at. We have quite a few other types of assessments we put out for the students. And then in December, we're going to show you some data from those also. So you can kind of see how we compare state testing versus some other testing we do three, four times a year and how we might use that a little bit different with our MTSS team. And that data probably really drives what we do in the teaching learning department more than this one set of data from the state. Okay. Just a reminder, oh, Matt, you went really fast on that one. I wasn't gonna go that fast.
Get used to the.
The clicker. So just a reminder, the six are the component grades. And then we just wanted to show you, remember an achievement, that's performance index indicators met. And every single one of them has a piece. When you get down to progress, you see it has the gifted, the lowest 20% students who dispose. We're gonna not hit all of that tonight. We're just gonna do achievement. But this might be a slide you refer back to at times as you go through some. So this kind of organizes it for you. This is what the new one looks like this year. And if you go to the actual website and we have it available for you, if you want to go in and do some look for yourself, which I'm sure you will before December. Then and are we have no grades like before, remember we would have grades on here. So this is very different this year, but we are able to go in where it says like view more data and kind of see where the data is from this past year that we were looking at. This is just what this looks like made mainly difference is there's no grades. And then we gave you the chance to go in and take a look at them if you want. Just a quick reminder, this is overall, we just wanted to remind you what we looked like with the six components in 2018, 2019, and then 2021, we're not given any grades. And we're going to go through a few of these tonight for you and then hit in December the rest of them. But this was just a quick snapshot for you. The other thing I wanted to tell you is we do have some slides in the PDF for you. That's just a referral back to 2019 for you, because we thought you might have questions as we went over the 2021 data. We just threw them in just to have the last data for us. So you'll see we kind of go back and forth. We're probably going to stay most on the 2021 data just for reference. The other thing I'll say right here before we flip it to Matt is in one of the resources we're going to give you tonight, it talks about last year 2021 data. And we have a report from the state of Ohio that we want to give you time to look at that talks about the fact that our students last year, for us, some of them were in person. Some were the more like a hybrid kind of model and some of them did the VLA, right? The virtual learning. The state looked at all of those and even showed that if you were VLA, all of your scores went down. And so we definitely have seen that. So when you look at this report, you're going to see if you are a hybrid, those kids reports went down. If you were in school five days a week, that seemed to be the best way for this testing. So we definitely see this as we go through ours. And the thing Matt and I haven't been able to yet that we're going to start doing now that this is out is digging down to like, look at our students that were online last year. Look at our students that were maybe out a lot because they were quarantined, right? Even though they were here five days a week and we really want to get into some of the absence stuff too around that. And now that we've just got that data, we can start doing that. But I think the state report really does highlight what we've seen across the state. The other interesting thing is this morning at OSBA, Matt and I and Dee actually went with us, attended a data meeting around the report card 2021 data. And they kind of hit some of the almost identical stuff we've seen. There were some different districts that they pulled up and it could have mirrored almost any district, the drop in 2021 from almost everybody. And the talk that they showed against the state average versus what we've seen happen. So it was very, that, the best thing we heard this morning is let the data lead you a little bit. Don't get too into worrying about it. Just let it lead you and go with it a little bit. So it was a nice refresher for us and kind of put us on a good path this morning as it was timely for this meeting this evening.
Yeah, and the only thing that I would add to that piece is that, you know, while there aren't any specific grades attached to the report card, you know, so for, you know, achievement in 2019, when information was was last reported, we got a B. There's, there's not a grade attached to that, but it's still good information that we can use to kind of create a better picture of where we are currently. And that information, we, we've talked to you before about MTSS, we're going to continue to talk more about that. But you know, this, this is kind of where we are now and then how we will use other data and moving forward to drill down to specific groups of students in our classrooms to help them. So. All right, so tonight we are going to focus our conversation around achievement. And so this is just a reminder of what's included when you think about that particular component. There are two different measures that are included with the achievement component. And those two measures are indicators met and performance index. So indicators met is how many students passed Ohio State test. You can also think about that as proficient or better on an assessment as opposed to performance index. And performance index gives a school and districts credit for the different performance levels of achievement from students. So we get credit for every student who took an assessment and there are some pretty good graphs here that kind of illustrate, I think, that for us. So those are the two measures. This is a really interesting graph. Let me kind of break it down for you. So this actually on the left hand side is 2019 data. You can kind of see that small, but it's on the left hand side. And then the right hand side is 2021. This is performance index information for all of Warren County. So let me flip here so I can actually see it a little bit better because it's so far away. So the average for Warren County in 2019, the performance average was a 97.1. You can see Kings, we're actually the third bar from the left behind Wayne Local and Mason City Schools in 2019. Our performance index was 100.7 out of 120 in 2019. If you look at 2021, this is going to be a common story. Dana already mentioned it. You can see that there's already a drop there. So the average in Warren County Performance Index for 2021 data is 86.8. We are still actually the third bar there on the left hand side in Warren County behind Wayne Local and Springbrough in 2021 data. And our performance index was a 91.1. So just kind of an interesting comparison, down a little over nine, nine points for us there as a district.
And this morning at the data meeting we were at, that seemed to be across the board about nine to 10 points, no matter what district they brought up. You say, Matt, that was pretty much what we heard this morning. Yep.
The, the state average is actually 72.4, I believe. So we're still well above local and state averages even with COVID, but yeah, definitely a common thread. So if you go into that interactive report card, that was the, the website on one of our previous slides. This is just a kind of a caption of what you could see if you go there and click the achievement radio button. So this is our 2021 performance index summary. And on the table on the left there has each of the seven performance levels. So you see advanced plus at the top, all the way down to untested. So the interesting thing, and if you look at your PDF, it spells it out because you'll see a very similar PDF for, or slide rather, for 2019. And the number of untested students is pretty significant for us. Yeah, so in 2019, we had less than 1% of our students in grades three through high school that did not take an assessment. Last year in 2021, in the spring, we had 5.4%. So that's a, that's a pretty significant number, obviously going to impact that performance index. Lots of reasons why students, you know, weren't able to test. We did our best to safely get students into the building if they were doing virtual learning. But 5.4%, that was pretty surprising, I think, when we actually saw that number come out. So again, when you look at this, we get credit for, you know, there's a calculation. We get a point value that's assigned for every student that for instance, scores proficient, even limited on an assessment. So even if a student doesn't do as well, they still get credit for what they were able to to provide there to the assessment. So that, that's the left hand side. The right hand side is, is that same data, just in a little different visual. So if you look at that, you can see the kind of the charcoal gray black color there at the top are our advanced scores, the green is accelerated and then the brown is proficient. So even when you look at our data during a COVID era, we still had a lot of students that are performing proficient and above. So this next chart is all about the tested indicators. And again, we just kind of threw in a comparison. So you could take a look at that. The table on the left hand side where you have the green check marks and the red Xs, that's 2019 data. And it just gives you a snapshot of the students who scored proficient, accelerated or advanced or advanced plus on assessments. So the threshold is 80% for students. And so you can see where we have green check marks in 2019, we met or exceeded that number. There are no grades, of course, that 80% is still there, but we weren't graded per se on the report card. So there are several areas actually on the right hand side where we didn't quite meet that. So there are 20 tested indicators in that column. And so eight of those tests, our students hit that minimum threshold of 80%.
So are these averaged over those three years?
No, these are, that's just data from 2021 on the right hand side. So the most recent test that we took.
So that's 2019.
Yeah, 2019 on the left, 2021, yeah.
And then we pick up to.
In 2019, we did. Yeah, so in 2018, you know, we, they were in, or 2019, rather, I'm sorry, we, we picked up a couple of different indicators that we had missed previously. So we were trending in the right direction. And then the pandemic.
Understand, like, so our sixth grade did not do that great, I guess, in 2019. Did you find that like by eighth grade, I guess they seem to like make up some ground? Is that typical what, I mean, because they do much? Well, I guess if we went back to 2017, when the eighth graders were in sixth grade. What were their number? I guess you compare them that way, like, are they?
We do, we do. We can look at that.
And actually, we have problems with our sixth grade teachers. You know, I mean, I'm being serious. I mean, you know, do we have a problem there or is that the way that we look? I mean, I guess.
I think you hit two, two different questions because you do always want to hit, you want to follow a cohort of a student, right? So if I'm in fifth grade, then you move to sixth grade, then you move to seventh grade. So you always watch that data of that group of students. And then you watch the data year after year from the specific grade. So you have to look at it two different ways. So that's what you're asking.
Is it a smarter group in sixth grade and?
Or. Like, you, you definitely want to see like, is there a number of gifted students? So you go back to the points and see is this maybe seventh grade has a higher percentage than the year before thereafter. Or it can flip flop. You can have a group of students that maybe have a group of students with disabilities that have higher math goals one year than another year. So you have to really drill down and look at all of it. It's exactly what you're saying. Yeah, you've got to do both ways. Yeah, great question.
Thank you for mentioning the moving target on what you have to score.
Right, right, right. Yes, yes.
And we actually, there are some charts in here that kind of illustrate that point a little bit again.
I like pie charts.
You like pie charts? I'll keep that in mind, Dan.
No pun intended, Mr. He.
So the only thing I'd add to that is that each year, the, the tests are not the same. The norms on each test are different. So like a fifth grade math test, the average across the state of Ohio could be much lower than what the fourth grade math test was for all students. So, so oftentimes the numbers don't necessarily indicate that because the level of the testing may just be different. It's not the same assessment. And so it's, it's good to follow the cohorts is the best way to do that. But when you look across the state, you could look at state norms for each one of these and they're gonna, they'll fluctuate. It's not apples to apples each from one year to the next.
So a great example of that was when I first got here seven years ago, the fifth grade scores were very low that year and especially with students with disabilities. So I started digging in and realized that class had 50 more students with disabilities than any class we've seen and quite a few goals around math than other classes. So then I followed them in sixth grade because I knew what was going to happen every year, right? As we, the nice part was I also followed them on the value added and the gap closing, which was happening and we were seeing that happen. So those scores were going in a different direction than just that one time, one test. So you have to look at it two or three different ways to really follow a cohort, which you should do.
So this does give us some trend data. This is a pretty cool chart as well. So this is just ELA data from third grade on the left hand side. And then if you follow that all the way across to eighth grade. So let me.
What is ELA again?
English Language Arts.
Okay.
So if you look at third grade, for example, and you can kind of see this is a trend across a couple of different grade levels. So this shows data from 2017, so 2017, 2018, 2019, and then 2021. So if we just look at the third grade there, this kind of paints a picture for us of perhaps the effect of COVID-19 and the impact that that had on students. Dana mentioned quarantine. You know, I, I think kind of roughly 20% or so of our students weren't with us in person, right? So they were, we even have some students that weren't with us at all because they did a homeschool option. And then we also had other students, of course, that did an online learning option. And we may not have. And we may not have testing data for those students. But you can kind of see in third grade, we see a very similar story painted for us in fourth grade. Because we those green bars indicate that we at minimum reached that threshold of eighty percent. And there's a very faint, I wish it was thicker, but it's a blue line that goes across there that kind of illustrates that threshold of eighty percent. And the red lines, the red bars there indicate where we have fallen behind. So interestingly enough, though, in some grade levels, fifth grade as an example. Since twenty seventeen, even last year, we met the threshold. So we met that indicator if it were graded, sixth grade ELA also met that indicator. And then let me point out something about eighth grade, because I think on on first look, that really looks terrible. It's all red.
It does.
It does. It looks bad. Let me offer this, though, okay? So look from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and look at the trend. We're trending up. So we were improving. Twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, we had more students. Scoring proficient or higher on that assessment. In twenty nineteen, we were like, I mean, we could almost touch it, seventy nine point six is where we were. So one more student would have kind of helped us there. And so, of course, the pandemic has set us back, so just want to offer that. Because prior to things shutting down, we were trending in the right direction. So go ahead, go ahead.
So, yeah, with respect to that, I mean, I'm I'm just trying to understand. I think I'm, I think I'm where where Dan is with this, that stuff stands out, right?
Sure.
The red stands out and. I'm I'm looking at it like a layperson, a parent. How how do I read that? That so I I'm seeing in twenty nineteen, and that looks like, obviously, you guys did some root cause. We made some adjustments and we see improvements, the the teams in the building. But. Like, are we communicating, is that something that gets communicated out to parents? Like, I mean, parents see that and they're like, wow, what's going on? At the junior high in eighth grade, right? But are we? Or is this the space for that? Or we are we communicating to parents that, hey, listen, this is. We we've identified things and to your point, Mr. Freeman, it was trending up because we've made adjustments. It's cascaded into the buildings and we're seeing those improvements. That is, am I making sense or?
I I think so, I mean, end of it, so you know, parents receive student scores individually and and we send those out. Or our students pick them up, families pick them up, like at the, you know, meet the teacher nights. And in the fall, we get them during the summer and they tend to pick them up, there are those family glossy reports. That are available, so students get their individual results. We we don't do presentations, or have not, like to PTOs or anything in the past on the data. It's always been in this forum where we've talked about it. And this this is released usually in kind of mid-fall. So we get this in October and and kind of this snapshot of a picture. Does that answer your question a little bit?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to quickly interject, just because of my past. We've taken a lot of these results and looked at them numerous times throughout the year. It's not a beginning of the year, let's look at this and forget about it. We're constantly looking at it, we usually get a snapshot, looks like this as well. And, you know, we've tweaked some things, as you alluded, you're looking at these results to see. You know, what we can do better and, you know, that's what we've always been looking for is those trends heading upwards.
Yes.
And it's always difficult, Mr. Bidwell, I think, because. Once you get the data, the students have already moved on to the next grade. So then all you can look at is, can I tweak how I'm teaching something? But you don't have the opportunity to go back and try some of that on the students that. Maybe didn't answer a particular question, because then you don't know. The following year with the group you're getting in new, if the same question will or a similar one will be on the test.
Yes, but we also can go back and look through some of it to see, was this particular strand the weakness? And then we could continue to look at that strand and kind of pull it apart a lot more. But you're absolutely correct. But you also can analyze the kids that you had and know the differences. Of year to year, speaking to your point about, you know, some of the kids. And that helps.
I have a question on, I guess, make sure I'm looking at it right. So two thousand seventeen in seventh grade. That the kids were below the eighty percent. So when you say they're trending upwards, then they would would they be the same kids in two thousand eighteen in eighth grade? And it got worse.
Yeah.
And, you know, the kids in eighteen that were ninety. Were below eighty. I'm not quite sure where we're trending up.
Well, I'm trying, we're talking, one thing to keep in mind, so this is.
Still prior to COVID, because I'm going to throw out twenty and twenty one.
Yeah, but so this is achievement data. When we look at cohorts, that's going to be later in the presentation. Not tonight, but and and that's why we don't want to, there's a lot on the table tonight and we want to have an opportunity to discuss it. That's where we'll look at progress of students. So value added, we've talked to you about in the past, where you look at exactly what you just said. This group of students and where they performed in twenty seventeen. And then as eighth graders, if you look at that composite, you're right, their their bar is lower. So their achievement was less. So that's where the progress piece comes in and we follow those those students.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just. Lots of. I had a son that was bad in math. And he like missed it because they did all this math change right when he needed the help. Like fifth grade, and then they were doing all the funky math and he'd come home and I'd go, no, this is the way you do it. He'd go, no, Dad, I don't want to do that. And I was like, no, carry the one and don't do that. And, you know, but then they they move on and then it's.
Then still bad. Then you're looking to fill in gaps if students miss that, right? But it's a good segue, because now let's look at math data, this is ELA.
Can can I just say one, let me add one thing, this, there's there's limitations in state testing. It's a one snapshot in time. And so for for us to to put all of our information and all of our. You know, emphasis on that one snapshot, that's just, it's one component of it. The limitation is in in Mrs. Phillips identified this, we get the information in late in October. So we've already moved on to the next grade level. Plus, the information we get, it's not diagnostic information. So it doesn't drill down to every individual child. It doesn't tell us specifically the questions that your child missed or this teacher taught these standards of these. It's not specific enough for us to really react a lot to specifically. That's why there are many other localized assessments we use along the way. That oftentimes provide us greater information than one final summit of assessment that the state creates. That we really don't even get a chance to see ahead of time. And we're guessing at which standards are going to be emphasized more than others. And it's, there's limitations in this. And so that's why a lot of educators are really pushed against the report card. Because it's not, it's oftentimes, it's not an accurate accurate reflection of the performance of a district. It's just one snapshot, one component that draws a lot of a lot of public view in it. Because we're putting a letter grade to where we are. And so I think the the work that we do beyond just this component is is probably more important. And Matt's talking about progress, progress is growth. Are our students growing over time in comparison to their age level peers? So what he'll he'll talk about much more at a later time is, are we, even though that trend might be going as achievement. But our students are probably may maybe growing in comparison to the group of all the students who have taken that test in that grade at a greater rate. So that's what we want to see. To me, growth is more important oftentimes than that benchmark of achievement. So just added commentary around that, but there are limitations to to state testing. And why there's been a little bit of pushback, actually, a lot of pushback from educators around that. Because I think it's just one snapshot, but the bigger picture is the stuff that happens throughout the year that is is more valuable to teachers. To help kids on a day-to-day basis.
Just your communication there helps if then. Yeah, hopefully people are listening, because I'm with Stacy on this, it's like, if this came home in my mail. I'd be like, right, I I'd be, I'm troubled, you know, just like the ones you get with your kids. And then you're like, okay, we got to work on this, you know. But. Yeah, I don't know, smoke group meetings, explain it that way, whatever you're doing, you know, that kind of thing. Because, yeah, I would just look at it and go.
I concur with that.
Or our seventh or eighth grade teachers, we're struggling over there in the junior high. You know?
I think everything, like what the three of you just explained, the value add Peggy and Dave that you just gave. Like, parents need to hear that, because I I wholeheartedly agree with you, Greg, on the report card. But we all know that's what people look at, like the report card is the shiny brochure that you get. You know, at the car dealership, everyone looks at it. And so we do need to be able to, I I like your idea, Dan, like, we need to be able to explain. I don't know if that would be, you know, a back school, open house, or something to augment these report cards when they come out to explain. And maybe it's just this discussion here and and we can lead, we can, you know, drive digital, get people to watch this. But, uh, yeah, it it just the discussion, I agree, certainly helps with that, so.
Great point.
Yeah.
And just to, you know, just so everyone knows too, who. Are at home listening today, the link that is that's provided here, or you can just go to O D E. And you can search local report cards and you can look up district and you can look up each building. And there are live links within the report card itself. So you can click and and drill down, you can even look at it in a pie graph instead of a bar.
Well, I think more so now that. I I it it is.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're seeing it all across the country, parents are going to be more involved in curriculum and. In a nutshell. Math, English, reading, writing, you know, those are. Don't send me any letters, but those are the most important things. You know, that, I mean, that's what we, everybody really wants to focus on and some of this other stuff that that, like, we want to be really good.
Right, those are core core subjects.
Yeah.
Of course, as as part of what we do every day with students. So here's here's math. Same grade levels, three through eighth grade. So you can see third grade there in twenty twenty one, we were above the eighty percent, fourth grade. And then you can see in in fifth grade. And we've got some changes there, so we've got some red. So some other things that we're doing and we've got some red in sixth grade. So we've changed the. Curriculum resource that's being used in fifth and sixth grade math. Which we think will result in some better scores.
Because that resource has been being, that's being used.
Eureka, Eureka math, so when you when you look at third and fourth grade, we use Eureka math K through four. And we've rolled that up over the past two years to fifth and sixth grade for some continuity for students. And so I think that will surely make a difference, as well as other work that we're doing with teachers. To align our assessments to the curriculum resource and the standards more clearly. So that work is happening now, even this coming Thursday. Fifth and sixth grade teachers will be working with a Hamilton County consultant that we've worked with over the past couple of years to work on this process. So that's just some some that we have in the works now to make improvements to this red that we see in moving forward.
One of the other things I'll say about math, when it comes to the state test, is math is when we start to accelerate students, right? So we have five A, six A and six double A. Well, that means the students in those take different state grade tests. So the six A, double A, they take the seventh grade test. So you skim off your top math kids and they take another test. So then they are not there for the sixth grade test. So it goes back to your point, Dan, we've got to look at the students at times. Because that can completely change if you move thirty kids out of that test. And they're your highest math kids and put them in another grade. That could very well make change the whole makeup of that great testing.
Right.
So we know that when we go into looking at these math also, because that definitely changes the composite.
So we do have somewhere between twenty five and thirty students in seventh grade that take Algebra one.
Yeah, that's another.
So they're not taking the seventh grade state assessment, they're not taking the eighth grade state assessment. They're taking the Algebra one high school end of course test in seventh grade. So those students are double accelerated. In the eighth grade, about forty percent of our eighth grade students take Algebra one. So they're not taking the eighth grade assessment, so that's reflected here in this data. Those students are also taking the high school Algebra one end of course test. That makes sense.
Forty percent.
About forty percent of our eighth graders, yeah.
Okay, so then it's, yeah.
Right, yeah.
So you look at this twenty eighteen and it's possible then that like the sixth grade, what you're saying is. We've had students, I believe you you use the phrase skimmed off of that. That are contributing to us being over the line for twenty eighteen for seventh grade.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So like back to your point, Stacy, the general public doesn't understand that, correct? So and we know those numbers, so there's a lot more that goes into this than just a red bar, yeah.
So this is the high school and of course graph. So we have Algebra one. Biology, English one, and just let me point this out about English one, so there are only three bars there. So in twenty nineteen is the last time that you see data. We don't give the ELA one assessment anymore. So this reflects a change at the state level in graduation requirements. Moving away from the accumulation of end of course points. And so our our graduates right now in twenty twenty two, they are accumulating end of course points. And starting in twenty twenty three, so our current juniors and beyond, those students. Have moved to the competency model of ELA. So they that that is the ELA two assessment and then Algebra one. So those are the two assessments that count for competency. And then these other assessments count for for students, they matter. But they help students earn seals. And we can talk about that another time, but there's lots of ways that you can earn seals.
Yeah, it's a whole other.
That's a whole other conversation.
Okay, so I'm not sure if it will fall in here or in the future, so you don't have to answer it now if it's in the future. Are students who stay until they're older, like in their twenties?
To prepare diplomas, yes.
How is that reflected in any of this testing or or is it?
So most of those students would do the alternate assessment, correct? And so the alternate assessment rules have changed in the past year. So most of this data is pre that rule because of last year's new testing. And they would fall in there, their alternate assessment data would be in these, all of this data. The new rules, more of our alternate assessment students now will actually take the the tests if they're in those classes. So that data could change a little bit for us, but this is old pre-assessment, so they're all in there. Good question.
Yeah, and we also see Peggy, the students who defer diploma, all that's also reflective in another indicator with graduation rate. So that's that's in there later as well.
I was kind of asking all of it in one question, so thank you.
You mentioned for the younger grades about changing to Eureka for math, help with those. Has there been any consideration about the geometry curriculum, just looking at the red? Is there, have there been any change or looking at a change or?
Yes, so in Algebra one and and geometry, we use different resources. It's not a a a single program per se. So on November first, we had teachers on that professional development day, our geometry teachers, working in the morning on that curriculum. They're going to have another time later this month around Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving break. To have some release time to continue working on that alignment. So we see an improvement here. So and let me let me just point out as well with the geometry assessment, and I get this question a lot. Because we have Algebra one and we have geometry and of course assessments. And the geometry and of course assessment does not factor into the new graduation requirements. The geometry assessment is meets the requirement that the state of Ohio has for students to be tested in math in high school. And that is because of the number of students that around the state, not just in Kings, that take Algebra one prior to ninth grade. So we have to have for federal requirements, another math test, and that's where geometry comes in. So. And interestingly enough as well, keep in mind that double accelerated. So, and interestingly enough as well, keep in mind that double accelerated group of students we have. We have eighth graders that are taking honors geometry, taking this assessment. So. So those are all the the testing indicators. Um, these are non-tested indicators and that's gifted. And chronic absenteeism, the top table where you have the X and the check mark, that would be twenty nineteen data. I should have labeled that. More clearly, sorry. Um, and then in the bottom, we've got twenty twenty one data. So. Uh, we've talked to you before about gifted and we have completely revamped and changed that model as a result of an audit that we did. Recently, and we've re-instituted um our gifted services just this year, starting in fifth grade math. And um, so again, over time, we'll see some change here. We were identifying students. But we were not servicing, technically servicing students um that the state required. And so. You can drill down. If you're on the live version of the state report card, you could hit that view more data button. And um it talks about the three ways that you can meet that indicator. And since we just identify and don't provide service, that's why um we have an X there.
So that's going to result in more skimming down the road. Now that we've re-instituted the gifted services.
Interestingly enough, we were, remember, we were doing some of the services. Um, we just weren't calling them a gifted because we weren't doing some of the paperwork around it.
Okay.
So some of that will stay. It's just we've added back in some of the paperwork. So some of that will be the same, no matter even with the new. Some of this is different though. So we'll get more points based on now going back to doing some of the paperwork.
Gotcha.
If you think back on the graph of the performance levels of advanced plus, that's where that is factored in. Students who have written acceleration plans um and are taking an advanced math. They, for example, if they have a written acceleration plan and they score accelerated on an assessment. It would be reflected as advanced for points. If it's advanced, they score an advanced score. Then they get the bump up to an advanced plus. So that's where that factors in. Um, and then we've got chronic absenteeism as well. Um, so we went from eight and a half percent um to ten percent, which. I expected to be very truthful with you, much higher numbers um with COVID nineteen last year. So.
That's where it is.
That's where we're going to stop tonight. You have everything in that PDF. That's in board docs right now, the entire presentation. Um, and so we'll, we'll move through and and talk about the other indicators in the future and also tie in. Um, as part of that conversation, the other assessments that we're using. Um, through our M T S S process, our system that we have there. To uh do work with students throughout the course of the year and not, not just these kind of autopsy results of what happened in the past.
We also wanna, you have two other resources on there. You have the guide to the report card. So if you get on there, the interactive. This helps you by every single component. And then in the very back, it talks about the new. For next year, state changes the report card and that's pretty helpful. So you've got this. The other resource that if you get a little bit of time, you should look at, this is what the state did around the pandemic's impact. On the students with the twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty one data. So this one goes into how everybody went down everywhere. And this is a state comparison, but if you then look at our comparison. In some ways, we were doing better than the state in general on how much it went down. So this is a nice resource to just compare what happened in the state. Due to the pandemic and you've got both of these.
And these are on board dots.
They are, yes.
Can I just say one final comment here? So first of all, um if the board has any. Um, continued questions or any data that you would like to see in upcoming presentations, let us know that. If there's anything that you can, you know, send me an email or you can talk, you can talk to us, we'll certainly work to um. Answer that and provide that. And I think I want to just thank Dana and Matt because as we've had a little bit of reorganization this year. Um, with Dana's role in our district and and supporting and and Matt, Matt's work as well. Um, we, we have an emphasis on the academic achievement of our students. Um, and I think. Just making space and time in meetings like this and sharing. We're owning a lot of the information that we see, right? It, there are things that we can improve on and we can do better upon and we have. Um, high quality people in place to to do that. So I think it's important for the board to know that. Um, because that was a a decision that you had made prior to my arrival on reorganization with Dana and her role. Um, and I think we're going to see the benefits of that over time um in the emphasis that we have. Um, and supporting all of our kids. And um, so I appreciate Matt, you and Dana both for delivering that. And there will be ongoing continued conversation um and and um open communication with the board on where we are. Are academically over time. So if there's anything you would like to see from us, let us know.
Thank you guys. Next on the agenda, our discussion items for the treasurer, Mr. Furnas.
Evening. Um, got seven items this evening. Uh. Most of the time I have with you, I'm going to focus on the five year forecast, but I am going to work through the other items. Uh. For next week, we will recommend the minutes from the regular meeting of the October nineteenth. We will add tonight's minutes with it. Uh, in the area of financial items uh with the over financials, take a few moments to highlight a few things. The monthly financial, uh, the baseline now is updated to the November forecast that you're. That I'll be presenting this evening. So you'll see some of the variances that we have with some of the unknowns with the new state formula. Kind of seen some gap closing with that. Uh, and we see some positive impact that we talked about going back to July. When uh we were in the discussions about uh financial stability and whether to seek revenue back in the summer. We've seen some of those things start to coalesce and come together. Um. That being the case, uh revenues are very close to forecast at this point after four months. And I'll talk about in the forecast, some of the details that have been updated on the revenue side. Uh, with expenditures, uh we're favorable on forecast after four months, which gives us a positive cash balance. Cash compared to a year ago, though, is significantly less. We do have a timing difference that we've not received homestead and rollback reimbursement from the state. Most homeowners may or may not know this, but uh if you live uh. Less than three acres, live in your own home, it's a single unit, family unit, you receive homestead exemption. So as everyone receives a ten percent rollback on their taxes, that's reimbursed from the state of Ohio. No time in our history, we've not received it before the end of October. It's about one point six million dollars. So that's. Inflating this negative comparison. Uh, those should see closed, that gap should close. One thing, and I'll talk more about this within the forecast, we have seen the operating deficit for this year close up closer to what we projected in July. Uh, because in July, we were modeling the impact of the new fair school funding model. With regards to uh revenues on page four, uh, we are slightly lower on revenue year over year. Part of that's in how we're classifying open enrollment students. And again, that's a change due to the new sphere school funding model. Uh, we're also seeing some shift out of other revenue, which were from payments in lieu of taxes that are now becoming taxable. And the driver of that for this calendar year was the uh elimination of the Deerfield Township Tiff. Uh, all of that property has become taxable again. Comparing to the forecast, very little variance on uh revenue. With expenses, uh we have uh an increase of a year over year of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which was forecasted at this point. Uh, the main differences why we have savings on. Tuition costs for community school, students on John Peterson Scholarship and Autism. Uh, we have had a change in the timing of our payments with Peterman. The Peterman bills of four hundred and fifty thousand dollar a month bill. Uh, we started school three weeks earlier, so we had more transportation cost earlier. Uh, we resumed the two route system, which changed those cash flows as well. And so uh year over year spending is uh up a little bit, but a little more than we would expect. Because of some of the timing with that cost compared to a year ago. Last page, this gives you, it's very small and I apologize. I try to keep it on one sheet of paper, but we do perform a. Uh, budget to actual line by line of the forecast for each month.
Yeah, it is. Uh, let's see, I just.
At popular demand, yes. So that provides a a comparison of each of those line items uh on how we roll up. Want me to be overly brief with monthly financials, but I do want to spend more time on the forecast side. Uh, included the public records log for you. Uh, a couple of requests in October and for the most part, you'll see. I'm back and so we're getting caught up. And so a lot of, a lot more green on there. Uh, so with the five year forecast. Good news is, Dan, I got some pie charts. Uh, the, the, the bad news is, is that unlike Dana and man, I'm not cutting it in half. Um, there's three pieces of background here. I provide you the full forecast document that we submit to the Department of Education. There's a lot of great detail in here. It gives you five year uh comparisons. It shows you the percent over increase. It gives you dollar variances year over year. If you do my kind of work, you can sit and read that all day long. We're not going to do that tonight. I've also included a state funding supplement to try to uh based off what we've modeled. Um, and I want to talk about uh state funding model here kind of right off the bat, the bat uh with our forecast. So. We know the state of Ohio implemented a new school funding model. Uh, we were supposed to receive our first payment in October. It will now be December. So the emphasis here, the key word with all of this tonight is model. I have modeled this formula into our forecast based off the best information I have. With the help of Forecast Five, who we utilize their services for our forecast filing for a lot of the financial work that I do. When we get that first payment in December, then I'll begin the process of reconciling our model to what actually happens. And so I want to uh put that caveat on this so we could see changes. I, I think we have something that's very fair and I think it's accurate, but until the state commits it, uh it's hard to say. There are other commitments on the expense side with some of the funding that we also don't have standards yet from the Department of Education. And so we have to wait on those as well. So there'll be further uh reports and updates of uh from me over the next few months as this gets rolled out. I think it'll take this entire school year for the model to be fully communicated and implemented and we can assess what it means to us in the future. So it's a very uh very big part of this forecast update. Uh, I'm going to talk about the COVID impact on enrollment. We have new property values for twenty twenty two. Uh, and I've included draft data for new construction, try the triennial update. And border of a re- revision activity. New construction is what it is. It is new stuff that has been constructed. And was occupied as of January first, twenty twenty one. Taxes always run a year in a year's. Try and update refers to the, every six years, we have a full reappraisal. And the three, off three years, we have an update. And as we all know, there's been quite a bit of inflation and property values driven by sales. We've been impacted by that. But the revision activity deals with primarily commercial property. That seeks to lower their values based off profit and loss, whether it be uh hotel occupancy rates. Whether it would be entertainment industry that has been closed during the pandemic. Had a lot of significant activity with border revision, particularly with hotels. If you think about the Phil's Old Corridor and the Kings Island Corridor. We also saw significant border revision case with Kings Island and Great Wolf Lodge that we were able to negotiate. Compromise that uh helps the school district and also was fair to what happened to the business model at uh those two entities. So those types of things have been included in this forecast. So with the fair school funding plan. Uh, begins this year and it funds uh basically two things. We have a base cost, which would be our. Traditional classrooms and then it has categorical funding that goes with that. Uh, the base cost is calculated using site statewide averages for historical data. As I've shown you before, with base cost, it's really driven by enrollment that it provides certain number, number of teachers based on your enrollment and grades. Typically, those grade bands are K three, four, eight, nine, twelve. Uh, and again, we're looking at receiving our first payment in December and we've modeled based off of this information that we have available. But the four primary areas are direct, direct classroom, instructional student support are things like guidance, nursing. Speech, psychologist, areas in social, social and emotional wellness. Building leadership and operations are things like principals and secretaries and custodians and district leadership and accountability. Let's folks that are sitting around this table. Some really broad overview. With the school fair uh funding bl- plan, base cost overview is that they. Use our enrollment and these statewide averages to develop chunks of money in each of these areas as a base cost. Base cost does not include things like special education, does not include transportation, gifted. E L L and some other important areas, uh because this next chart. It would say, well, goodness gracious, we spend a lot more money than this. And here's your first pie chart. So the base cost, the state is calculating uh that it is seven thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars. And then you have your add-ons. So things like special ed, transportation, E L L. New model, the, I'm slaying back up. The old model used property values to determine the state share and the local share exclusively. You have a lot of commercial property, not a lot of kids, great. Cause you have a lot of property value, possibly with not a lot of cost. If you have a lot of houses and you're primarily residential, which drives a lot of students and it was happen to be nice homes that could drive a lot of value. But the value didn't always keep up with the cost of uh the number of students that might be in those homes. This model uses property values, uses federal adjusted gross and median incomes. And takes into account a disadvantagement factor with your students, primarily around economic disadvantagement of your students. Economic disadvantagement can be driven by uh the income in the household and the number of students in that household. So a student could be, you could have two earners making the exact same amount of money. If they're in, they have one child in that home, they're not economically disadvantaged, but if their sixth child in the same home with the same income, they would be disadvantaged. Those three weights determine your local share versus your state share. This is expressed in the form of a per pupil, because the number of kids you have drive that calculation as well. You've heard me say, I've used the word preordained in the formula as to whether we're a locally funded district or state funded district. Saying is still true in this formula. The difference is, is that this formula will actually move with the number of students that we have, where we have historically been in the past. Regardless of what the components were, we were capped and we were going to get the same money that we had received last year. So as you can see, our local share works out to be fifty six hundred and eight dollars and the state shares sixteen hundred and six. Now, we'd be very candid with you. Everybody thought the school funding model was going to fix it. And there weren't going to be any more levies and there was going to be plenty of money flow from Columbus. That wasn't your perception, then you're probably not being completely honest with me. So I'm giving you the, the, this is where we're modeling at this point in time. I believe the state. Is going to have a base cost average of seventy two fourteen and I believe our local share of that is going to be fifty six hundred and eight dollars. That's based on a three year average of our students. Uh, they average that over time. As I've mentioned before, things like student success and wellness, career technical education, disadvantaged pupil impact aid. And gifted are added to that base cost funding. We also receive casino funding. Preschool funding based off head counts, special education, transportation funding, which is a reimbursement based off our actual cost. And we receive special education catastrophic cost reimbursement. What is catastrophic cost? These would be high incident students who cost typically over about thirty two thousand dollars a year in cost. That were reimbursed based off our state share by how much they exceed that level. You had helped me Dana thirty kids last year.
Yeah, thirty.
That exceeded the thirty two thousand.
Yeah.
We had some approaching six figures. Our state shares about twenty percent. So we get twenty percent reimbursement.
Think it was, I think it was a little higher, twenty five, twenty six.
We're going to be twenty percent of the new formula.
Oh, is it?
Uh, and I'll explain that here when we talk about property values coming up. Um, and then it was then capped by a state level of appropriation. Well, the state has. Well, the state has quadrupled the level of appropriation for catastrophic cost. We're fortunate Dana and her team, it was a arduous process to file these. And if I didn't make them, they probably would quit. And I try to help them. It's designed to have you not apply, in my opinion. We always apply. So we submit about enough cost last year generated about quarter of a million dollars of reimbursement. The state has told us to plan for that to double. So that's, we're forecasting about 450. Take a little more of a conservative approach. So this is significant because we are a, a district that we do a really good job in the area with special needs. A lot of providers like children's and others refer families here and we do a good job of servicing them. And it costs money and those kids are factored in when we talk about cost per pupil. There's, there, you know, we'll have students that cost a hundred thousand dollars and I'll lead you to believe that we get to an average of 10, how much we might be spending on some of those kids that are gifted. One of the things that the fair school, another thing that the school, fair school funding plan does is it categorizes the revenue differently. We've had open enrollment students and if they've provided revenue to us. Now students are paid where they're educated, not where they live. So those students will still be re, will still be paid for them, but they'll be categorized the state money, not local. So they'll shift some things on our five-year forecast where we'll see decreases where it's really not a decrease. We'll see increases that really aren't increases. This really is trying to show you over time what we're showing for state aid. It's fairly flat for our base cost. You have some re-categorization here, which is what the different colors on the bar chart are trying to show. And I've taken a conservative view and I'll get into that here very quickly. When we look at our expenditures though, keep them, so we're going to go, now we're shifting to the expenditure side. Where again, we're treating kids that are educated here, not living here. Under the old model, if you lived here, we received some state aid for you. But then if you took a scholarship to go to an autism scholarship at John Peterson, you went to a community school, they would subtract funding for us. Particularly harmful to Kings and other suburban districts. We were capped, so when those kids came in, we didn't receive any money for them. Yet they took money away. And we, in our, particularly our purchase services, if I had more years in here, this chart wouldn't be so flat looking. It would be very steep. It would look like it's more of a, this is about a 15 degree grade and it would be more like a 45 degree grade. Those no longer, because we only are paid for educated students, they're funded directly. So they're not passing through, so we lose that expense. But last year that was about 2.8 million. It's dropping about a million dollars, 1.1 million dollars on those charge offs. When we talked back in July, as we were considering whether to seek new revenue or not. This was a very big part of why we chose to wait, because we anticipated, modeled these savings and knock on wood. I was accurate. So you know, that, that's a, that's a good for me and a good for my family. This shows over time kind of what those changes are due to the fair school funding plan. Obviously the, the best part of this change of the pass through is that for Kings, this money was upfront. We, we got it in 2022. After this impact, I think the, the impact's going to be very minimal. It's not to say, so this is cumulative over time. That we are benefiting from having that expense go away here on the front end. This looks different for all across the state, depending upon your enrollment, your property values, your income levels. Here's the biggie. What about the enrollment? I really want to emphasize here, I've taken my view on enrollment for funding purposes. Not to drive staffing, not to drive facilities. And not to try to figure out what has happened with COVID and what's going to happen with COVID. Because we've seen a lot of disruption in enrollment and I don't think it's settled itself yet, in my view. I'm modeling 45 to 50 students increase. So when you, I talked about, we've been very conservative from state funding. And we look at that being fairly level over this period of time. A lot of that has to do that I have very little new enrollment plugged in here. And that may be right. May not be. So let me explain my rationale for the enrollment. So my, I'm basing this on historical live birth data and I have that for Kings and I know what's happened. That's. And when I say live birth, that's the five-year-olds that haven't come, the four-year-olds, three-year-olds, the two-year-olds and the one-year-olds. They were born here. I'm making the assumption they're still here. I look at the last five years' history of live births and I compare that to the kindergarten classes that have arrived. We average about 125% of live births manifest itself into a kindergarten class. This past year, there were. If I, when I use that for the 21, 22 year, my projection should say there's 362 kindergartners. We have 364. Okay. So this, I may be on to something to try to come up with some rationale, some fundamental basis that makes sense to the board to base state funding. So taking out over the next five years, if I take those live births at 125%, this is my projected kindergarten. And then if I subtract off the seniors, the juniors, the sophomores and the eighth graders, just lopping off the most experienced cohort, replacing them with my projected kindergarten. This would be the impact on enrollment. Now I got a big outlier in live births. I wonder what people did during the pandemic. I don't know. We'll see. And you can also see where I think there's an argument that I think that the 45 to 50 students. And it's a 42 student average over that timeframe. We are growing closer, the kindergarten and the seniors are getting closer. We had a long period of time where that could be a delta of 100 students. So there it is. It's completely subjective. It's my work and it could very likely be wrong. But it's a defendable rationale, I think, to base funding and it's conservative. If there is still a COVID bump of kindergartners who didn't come this year, they're going to manifest themselves here in another year in all likelihood. And I'm not assuming any other changes in the other cohorts and grades, one through 11. Historically, we don't see a lot of change there. And so. That's, that's my rationale for enrollment. Funding. So with our, with this current model, with the lower, lower enrollment, we're showing that our base cost will be guaranteed. Meaning that we will not get less than we received in the forecasted period. What's driving that is that we have higher property values, personal income data. That will be factored into the formula. It's going to offset the phase in that we expect to happen on base cost. Our biggest benefit of 1.1 million dollars is the elimination of the pass through cost that we've talked about. This model is not going to change that we're 60% plus funded by real estate taxes. And in Kings, the majority of those real estate taxes are paid by homeowners. It means that operating levies are still going to be part of maintaining financial stability. I'm not saying that's exclusive, but it's also, but it's going to be part of the equation. Remember, there are three ways you achieve financial stability. And if there's nothing you ever remember, I say, this is it. You raise revenue, cut expenses or do both. That's, that's, that's how it's done. Questions on the fair school funding model. It's complex. I'm learning it every day, trying to get better at it every day. But that's the best information I have until they actually produce our first model and I can compare it. If it's a significant difference, I may bring a forecast back to you after the first of the year as an update. Hopefully we're going to continue to progress in, in, in the general trend that we have been over the past year. With respect to understanding where we are. Let's transition into property values. So I'm assuming everyone's received their cards.
Yes.
And your numbers went up. The residential values increased by 16.3% overall. New construction grew by 3.1%. And I, and remember that's new construction that happened throughout calendar year 2020. I will be candid with you. That was higher than I had projected by a pretty significant margin. COVID hit three months into 2020. And so there, there was more new construction that came on. How this works is that we also saw a commercial values decreased by 3.9%. We've seen that with, through border revision. Our two biggest losses were on King's Island and Great Wolf. Let me explain for our viewers. And to remind the board for your benefit, what, what happened? So the legislature allowed for the, the, the normal border revision deadline is March 31st. On March 31st, we all thought it was going to be a fantastic summer. It was going to be over. Fair to say. And then summer got here and Delta got here and everything changed. The legislature gave our commercial property taxpayers another bite at the apple to go to border revision by August 1st. Great Wolf, King's Island approached the county auditor, knowing that if they'd taken a reduction that they were likely going to win and be entitled to. It would happen this year and it would cost the King's School District, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head here, I think it was three to $400,000. They agreed to negotiate taking that reduction on January 1st, 2022. Which allows them for us to wash out all the other activity in commercial properties. And allow a tax rate to adjust to account for that loss of value. What it's going to do is raise the rate, because we always talk about as values go up, the rates go down. I'm always talking about homeowners. Well, the same is true in reverse. When values go down, the rates have to go up. And by waiting and negotiating that, so they paid their taxes for, that were due in 2021 for 2020. They're going to take a reduction in 2022 at King's Island and Great Wolf. Great Wolf's reduction is going to be spread over two years. And then they will come back on to the tax rolls by 2024 after 2020 values. Now, they had the opportunity to appeal at that time. We'll have the opportunity to appeal as well and be a party to that decision. And so that has, that helped, that solution, and I give full credit to Matt Nolan, working with us and reaching out to us and working with the, the attorneys at Cedar Fair. That was a good solution and it was fair and it was just given the circumstances around the pandemic. So this table here shows you just with the, really kind of illustrates what I'm describing to you. This is our historical values up through 2021 and our value changes. And this is class one, our residential properties. Class two are commercial properties. As you can see with the increase that we're seeing happen here in our values through the triangle update and new construction. The rate's going to be rolled back, the, the rate that homeowners pay will be rolled back, I'm estimating. 4.58 mils. That mitigates the amount of the increase in value to keep their taxes equalized. We also know that the county is taking a tax holiday on senior services levy and another levy that I, I can't recall. That in Kings, that should mean that taxes are the same. It's conceivable in some cases, they may be lower. How could that happen? Well, if your house did not go up by 16% and only went up by 10, your taxes are going down. Upside of your house went up by 20 and the average is 16, you could see a small tax increase. On the commercial side though, you can see our rates going up and that's to affect the overall reduction in values of commercial property, which a lot of that is driven by Great Wolf and King's Island. In our forecast, I, I have some value coming back because of those two properties. But I'm also anticipating we're going to see reductions on particularly in hotels. Matt has already told us that if a hotel comes in, it's literally going to be an automatic. And so we've been proactive, myself and Dave DiMuzio, the attorney who represents the district on property values. And we have an attorney do that because only an attorney can be present at the border revision. I cannot be present on behalf of the district. We've been taking initiative to work with the property owners in advance. To try to not let them get in there and get their easy reduction and see if we can't negotiate a reduction that's not as severe. We've had some success with that so far. Questions about this? It's a big deal because when folks got those cards, they believe a big tax increase is coming. It's not going to be the case and depending on their individual situation, there may be a small one, but there may be a small decrease as well. And I just really don't think that I can emphasize that enough or say it enough until the tax bills get here. Now. And I'm going to anticipate a question you have, what about the bond retirement rate? Yes. So with the bond retirement rate, we've had a 2.3 mil reduction on that over the last four years. I'm going to recommend that we keep the rate at 3.5 mils for this year. It's going to over collect by only about $67,000 versus what our debt service needs are. Which is miniscule and four and a half million dollars of debt service. You have the JFB debt comes, the Jeff Burns debt from 93 comes off. So we're going to have some readjustment and reallocation in our, in our schedule. I think we can look at a, a, a reduction for at the end of 2022 going into 2023. That will be good because if nothing else changes and the county takes the holidays off on their countywide levels. Then we've got a small reduction on our bond retirement fund to try to offset that for homeowners and keep them the same. That's, that's my thought process. I've talked that over with Matt and his team. They're supportive of that. It would be at most a point, a quarter of a mil decrease. Very, very small. And I think it could position us for maybe a bigger decrease next year if we wait. And again, with other factors going on in the county, that could be good overall for homeowners with that approach.
So I'm going to ask an obvious question. So the additional money that's collected. What did you say? 67,000? Where would that, which pot?
It was in our debt service fund. It's restricted for debt service only.
So the money just stays there for the year?
So all of our remaining bonded debt will mature between now and 2032. So the challenge is, is those property values change. And we know what remaining debt we have and what cash reserve we have in the debt service fund. My job is to get it to zero when it's all paid off. We won't want any money left in there, because that means if we have money left in there, it can only be used for debt service. And if we have no debt, that means we collected it from homeowners and they could have had it back. That's the end game.
Okay.
And so I'm looking at. Every year's not leveled debt. We have different amounts, different rates, different issues. And so the debt service schedule can be a little choppy. So that's $67,000 this year may help us cover where the debt service is a little higher in 2025 or 2023. And so it's a, we're evaluating the existing year, but we're also looking at the existing life of our remaining debt. And trying to hit it as close as possible, that we're only going to collect what we absolutely need. And if we don't need any longer, when it comes to debt service, we want to give it back to the homeowners.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've had foundation on fair school funding model. On how I concocted an enrollment and property values and what that means to homeowners. So what's all this mean to the forecast? Cause I haven't talked about that yet. About halfway there. Now I'm going to, there's a warning. With the November forecast, we add a year fiscal 2026 has been here. So when you see some of these slides, you've got to look diagonally. This is sort of like what Matt and Dana were challenging. And maybe there's something they're going to pick up here from me that they, you may see on their slides in another month. So let's come back to the levy health assessment. This is sort of a starting point. This is a snapshot of fiscal 21 is in the books. This was our forecast from May projecting there's that 4.5 million dollar operating deficit that you saw that was in the twos in our monthly financials. And this was the projected deficit through 2025. Now we have November. We've added 2026. So you got to look diagonally here. We're at 19 million, now we're at 13. Higher property values from new construction. Because again, the triennial update just serves to roll the millage back. So the new construction is where you generate new money on your real estate taxes. And then you have the impact on the expense side dealing with the state full, us fair school funding model. Current fiscal year, what we, where we project to finish and where we look to be in 2023. By comparison, you know, this was deficit most of last year, Esser money. Uh, Esser money helped us tremendously, because the things that we were spending money on to be in school every day, that was able to reimburse us. And so with uh, with the other things that we've talked about, uh, we have uh picked up and improved through June of twenty twenty-three. From the May forecast, I'll try to make this a little bigger, and again, this is just, I like to tell you uh where we've been, so we know where we're going. Uh, we were looking at estimated millages, if you were looking at achieving financial stability exclusively through new revenue. We were looking at ranges of five point eight four to seven eight three. And if we waited a year, uh, same impact on the forecast would take a higher range of millage. And approximately one mil uh generates uh one point one million dollars. Same piece here, uh, now these ranges are, they're lower than twenty twenty-two was. It has put twenty twenty-three kind of getting it closer to where that one year off range was before. And as you can see now, uh, we're looking at about seventy-two thousand dollars more uh per mil. Uh, which helps drive these numbers down as well. But it reinforces for you, uh, time is more in fact, time is a bigger factor than this equation than the money is necessarily. So here's a piece where we're trying to get that diagonal look. So we were in a range of six seventy-one to eight fifty-eight, that's brought into the same range by waiting a year. That's the benefit from new construction and from the uh, uh, air school funding mount, model. And then the twenty twenty-three model, uh, we modeled in May was, or I'm sorry, this is from July. With this school funding model, eight point five eight to ten point one six. It's put us in the same, same scenario, same uh considerations that the board had this summer. Uh, we've been able to use this and kind of move it out a year, which is a positive, that's good. Uh, but it doesn't, we haven't changed the trend here, so in that regard, the forecast isn't really uh changed. So when you look at your levy recaps, uh, you see that in the table. And all of these projections are based on this forecast with no changes in the programming. So when we talk about these millages, again, this is assuming you run your existing program and that program costs more by an inflationary factor. You're not uh impacting it on the rep, on the expenditure side, only looking at the revenues. So how's the trend compare? Kind of like that when you go to the eye doctor, here's your before in May, here's your after in July. And here's your after in November. Uh, it's not changing the trend, it's extending things. Uh, we're moving into what will be our sixth year since the last levy, which occurred in twenty sixteen. Uh, twenty twenty-two would be your first ask, which would not collect until twenty twenty-three. And so the trend, I mean, in Stacey L, the trend's more important than looking at cash balances. Cash balances are just an accumulation of the trend. Six million is not going to happen in twenty twenty-six, because the Board of Education's gonna make decisions around increasing revenue. Cutting costs, we're doing both, and this becomes what we have to deal with, we have flattened our trend. Uh. And we've been helped through the things that I've mentioned this evening, but long term, it, it, it has not altered it. Uh, from where we were when I was talking to you in twenty and eighteen about where our forecast was. Just some data here to reinforce that, we had a four point four million dollar deficit in May, it's reduced to two point seven five. That's great, but it's also uh telling you what I've reinforced, that the trend is, it's improved, but it's changed. Currently, our cash reserves will operate until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. If new revenue was sought in twenty twenty-two, it can't be collected until twenty twenty-three. Wouldn't see a full collection until twenty twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
And that's why we do it.
That's because it takes eighteen months, so it's that year.
So everybody's looking at pot of gold, saying we don't, we have all this money.
Gotta get in front of it.
Gotta get it.
You gotta get in front of it.
To ask for a whole lot.
Or you start looking at these numbers out here that we don't wanna talk about. Because you're just putting it off too long.
Yes.
You had a graph for that showed that.
I did, and I could bring it up, but there's one more year on there now, and so the last year looks a little wonky. Uh, this demonstrates cash balance, and again, we're uh, again, we have cash reserves through June twenty twenty-three. Which is a continued improvement, but we're getting closer and closer to the, to this point in time where there are no more cash reserves. So here's uh the big finish. And I think this is the focus for the Board of Education for twenty twenty-two. Uh, we went through last year in late twenty and twenty-one with a great deal of work on financial stability and tearing our budget apart. Uh, and identifying uh what is our core program and what are areas that might be uh available for reductions. Our current trends, uh, you're gonna need one of those three things to be determined by July of twenty twenty-two. For six months of this year is working with this forecast on how it can be approved and how we can alter the trend. If you pass additional revenue in twenty twenty-two, it's not collected till twenty twenty-four. Expenditure reductions need to be implemented no later than July fifteenth, because you have contractual obligations. Uh, in your bargaining agreements with transportation and the Department of Education that have to be decided before that date. So it's not a case where you can dip your toe in with revenue in the fall of twenty-two and then alter your program. Once you get past July fifteenth, your program is your program and you have to own it from a cost perspective. So those are the, what I see and would recommend is your, the, the board focus and the work that we need to do. In the first half of calendar year twenty twenty-two. Fortunately, that clock is wrong. Uh, but that's all I've got for this evening, I entertain questions that you have, that's all I have on the forecast this evening.
I was just gonna ask you, if you could remind me, how long was the twenty sixteen levy supposed to last or projected to last?
I went back and looked at uh campaign literature and indicated three to four years, which would have been a ask in twenty. We're gonna be at six, if you look at the history of the district, six years has historically been the spread in operating levies in Kings. Uh, you know, that's not justification for a levy, uh, but at the same time, it's. Preordained as a locally funded school district. Air school funding model doesn't change that. And uh, with the kind of millages that we're talking about from a revenue side, those are consistent. With what our history has been from a timing and an amount perspective. All right, no other questions there, I'm gonna keep moving. Uh, since I'm uh close to the end here, uh, we'll have three other items for the board on next week. Are they in a certificate and final appropriations or compliance documents? The appropriations typically align very closely with the forecast. Uh, the do represent about a nine hundred and eleven thousand dollar reduction in appropriation, which is our legal level of spending from July. And that's driven almost exclusively by the change of the pass-throughs on the tuitions. Uh, that's also based off truing up to where our actual staffing uh configuration is for this year. I have uh put out there for approval, recommendation of establishing January eleventh as the organizational meeting. Uh, I've sent each of you draft dates for board meetings. I know Dan, you're not blocking your calendar. You Dave, but for the three board members, if you have the opportunity to review that, uh, really two changes, we're looking at a organizational meeting. A board retreat and then the work session, regular meeting in January, so it would be three straight Tuesday nights together. And then uh combining the work session in June as well as in July, that a lot of struggles with uh. Working in vacations with uh the number of board meetings we have in June and July between staff and board members. And Mr. Sears, and I think that calendar we've laid out would allow more time for the board and uh administrators to uh. Work some vacations in, but also take care of the business of the board, and if it's necessary, we can call, call a special meeting. Because in almost all cases, it's a personnel item, either someone leaving or someone coming that we need to address. So if you have the opportunity to review that, that list would be approved at the organizational meeting. But more feedback I get from you before that time as well for. But uh, then we'll, we'll get that squared away. And then uh, among the five of you, someone has to volunteer to be the president pro temp for the organizational meeting. So I need to have that blank filled in for next week's agenda.
I'll do that.
All right, I, I, I'll give you substantial help, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be okay. There are no other questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Next on the agenda is Mr. Sears.
Just one item um tonight and um a little bit of foreshadowing by Coach Meisner and the uh swim team. Um, wanting to approve that trip to the state championship in February. So love the confidence that they have and uh looking forward to a great season, but that'll be, I mean, can in February. That's all I have tonight.
And items presented by the board this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Our second motion.
Mr. Ferris.
Yes.
Mr. Belfer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwell?
Yes.
Ms. Callan?
Yes.
Mr. Egan?
Yes.
We are adjourned at seven fifty-one.